Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call it to order the October 27th, 2025 Shelby Township Planning Commission Meeting. Chairman, Secretary Moore, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. DeChau.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Cassali is out tonight. She's absent. Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. Luray?
Here.
Chairman Moffett is out this evening, and Acting Chairman Turner will be filling in.
Here, thank you.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Also with us, we have our Planning Director Julie Misich, our Planning Department Manager Nick Fiore, and our Township Attorney, to my right, the Honorable Bob Kirk. First item is approval of our agenda for this evening.
So moved?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes for our September 22nd meeting.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under correspondence, we have two items. First is the City of Rochester Hills. It's a master plan adoption. Julie, you want to say anything about this?
Yes, thank you Chairman. So, the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act requires the abutting neighbors, neighborhood to, or city to provide information on adoption of their master plan. So this is just a notice from Sidewell Rochester Hills, notifying us that they're going to be adopting their 2025 master plan.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Secretary Moore?
I move to receive and file the Notice of City of Rochester Hills 2025 updating their master plan use, adoption.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Luray. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. And go ahead, Julie, second one, same thing.
Yes, sir. The next one is from Washington Township. It's also a notification of intent to update their master plan. So this is at the beginning stages of updating. Washington Township is going to be updating their master plan. So will be, they will be providing us more correspondence as the year goes on, and I will share that with this board.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? If not, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Luray?
I can make a motion to receive and file the notice of intent from Washington Township to update their master plan.
Is there a second?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Luray, supported by Commissioner Appone. Any questions? Hearing none. Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. All right, tonight, under our site plans, we have two non-conforming use applications and one rezoning petition. The first is a site plan Class A non-conforming use number 2516 for Ken Zabczynski, Zebra Holdings Incorporated, LLC. It's a vacant parcel located north of 22 Mile Road on the east side of Mound Road, proposed vehicle and heavy equipment storage yard. This is a re-review. I would advise that there were 79 copies of the agenda were sent to all property owners abutting the site on October 20th, 2025. Mr. Kirk, could you explain the applicability of the Class A non-conforming use and as they relate to this site?
The use, the use as it currently exists is non-conforming under the current ordinance. Ordinance, however, it was in existence for many years. The applicant's asking for a Class A non-conforming use, which will allow this to continue, can be kind of rebuilt and continued. However, with this, the Planning Commission can impose certain conditions, and we were here last time on this, and now we're back again after first review.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kirk? Okay, Commissioner Moore, do we get any correspondence on this?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The format for the meeting will be as follows. The petitioner, which is here, or his or her representative, will give a presentation stating the reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner may make any concluding remarks. Mr. Snyder is here. Go ahead, Pete.
Thank you. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, representing the applicant, Zebra Holdings. Mr. Ken Zabczynski is in the audience, as he was last time we were here, so he can answer any questions that I cannot. Obviously, you saw this, I think, two months ago, a couple of months ago. There were a couple of issues that we walked out. One was the major screening along the east property line, abutting the condominiums there, the two different condominiums. And the other was the gate and the access out front. So, at this point, we, and since, since the meeting, we walked the site with, with your planner, Mr. Fiore, and looking at the screening situation, and decided where it would be best to add trees. The applicant is showing on this plan a, I think, 25, 10 to 12-foot spruce trees to be planted in the areas that were identified as, as we walked, that needed some screening. Those trees are actually already in the ground. They were, they delivered and installed already, just because of seasonal timing. It made sense to get them in before it was winter. Also, with regard to the gate, again, there were some, there were some residents that were having, you know, that had made some complaints about trucks stacking up on Mound Road, and so the applicant has moved, he moved the fence and has set up for the gates so that traffic can pull in the entrance and pull up to the gate. The gate will actually be about 335 feet away from Mound Road, which is easily enough for three semis and four, if they're, if they're close to each other, to line up on the driveway going in, rather than lining up or, or sort of waiting out on Mound Road. The gate itself is not installed. They're waiting for the motors to actually activate it. But, but the fence is in, and it's all set up, so, for the fence and the gate to be moved. So, quick action, of course, on the applicant's part to, to make things better out there. So with that, I, I'm really available for any further questions or further review comments that you might have. But, again, I think he heard you last, last meeting and has done something about it, so.
Okay, any commissioners have any questions? I can tell you, I appreciate his quick response on the, well, the two major items that did come up at the meeting. So, as far as I'm concerned, I think he's addressed everything that needed to be addressed, so. Julie?
Yes, I agree.
Are you up on this? Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Turner. Thank you, Mr. Zabczynski, too, for following up on these items right away in a very timely fashion. So, I don't have any objections either. The only thing that I did want to mention is to reach out to the fire department. They had a couple of comments, and as long as those are addressed, we should be good to go on this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So at this time, anybody in the public who wishes to come forth and speak for or against it is free to do so at this time? Anybody? Going once, twice, three times? Okay, we'll back up here. Pete, do you have anything else you want to say?
Nope, no, thank you.
All right. You can sit down, then. I think we're all set for now. "The Planning Commission's decision must be based on the following standards: The continuance thereof would not be contrary to the public health, safety, and welfare, or the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The use does not and is not likely to significantly depress the value of nearby property. The use was lawful at the time of its inception, and no useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provisions or requirements of this ordinance with which the use does not conform. Planning Commission may approve or disapprove this request, or we can postpone this this evening to evaluate any information we've received. Motion is in order."
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore?
I move to grant the Class A non-conforming designation for site plan number 25-16 for Ken Zabczynski, Zebra Holdings LLC, vacant parcel number 23-07-21-100-013, located north of 22 Mile Road on the east side of Mound Road, based on the following findings: That it meets the conditions set forth in Section 7.15. B for a vehicle and heavy equipment storage yard, subject to the applicant submitting revised plans addressing all Planning Commission, Department, and Engineering comments. The approval is based on the following: Number one, the operation shall conform to all township, county, state, and federal regulations pertaining to this activity. Number two, the site has convenient access to 23 Mile Road. Number three, the use of the site is limited to the description of the site plan. Number four, the use will like, not likely result in nuisances for surrounding development. And number five, the site was originally part of a larger parcel that contained the same activities and used for outdoor storage since the 1960s.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Appone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck. You're all set. Thank you. The next item is also a site plan non-conforming use application number 25-30 for George Papadalis, Telly's Greenhouse and Garden Center, 4343 24 Mile Road, located on the north side of 24 Mile Road, west of Shelby Road. It's a greenhouse expansion. I would also say that on, there were 25 to 30, oh, 33 property owners were sent copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting on October 20th, 2025. Mr. Kirk, I'd like you again to chime in on the applicability of the Class A non-conforming use for this site.
This one's a little different. This one's been approved already, but like the last one was approved of the specific site plan. They're looking to modify that site plan, so it has to come back to the Planning Commission for a modification if you wish to grant it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kirk? Raquel, did we get any correspondence on this one?
We did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Format for this meeting will be same for what we just went through. The petitioner, who's Mr. Snyder again, will give her presentation stating the reasons for the request. Commissioners may then ask questions. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner may make concluding remarks. Go ahead, Pete, your show again. Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, Pete Snyder. The, the subject property, it's about 16 acres. It's located on the north side of 24 Mile Road, west of Shelby Road. Some of you long-timers may remember it as Mueller Sunrise Nursery. I do, because I had a part-time job there way back when. So, but again, it, it's now owned as Telly's Greenhouse. George Papadalis, the applicant, is here with me to answer any questions about the functioning of the greenhouse that, that I am not able to, which probably will be most of them, because I'm not, worked there a long time ago, and it was very different. So, but again, it's zoned R1B. It already has a non-conforming use. The reason that we are doing the site plan, rather than the original preparer of the site plan, is because AEW did it. They're now your township engineer, so they were prevented from continuing with the project. So there, it's not as easy as, you know, simply dusting off the old site plan that they did and adding to it. So we had to generate a new site plan. We went out and did a complete, new, updated topography. And so, I think because of that, there are a variety of notes that were on the old site plan, on the old non-conforming A site plan that are not on mine, which is something that I can get with the Planning Department and rectify. So if you see that long list of, of things that, that should be on the site plan, I think almost all of those fall into that category. The modification is really pretty simple. It is for a, a green, basically, it's a greenhouse that they're taking from a different site, and they want to add it in the back. It's a little hard to see on this, but it's this, it's roughly square, all the way on the, on the left-hand side, just south of the gravel parking area. It, again, it's a, it's a greenhouse behind the other greenhouses. There was a comment, actually, in the, in the review that they're putting it down on asphalt that was put down, dah dah dah. That's actually not, that's not asphalt that you see in the aerial. That is impermeable fabric that they grow mums on. It's weed barrier fabric that they lay down and then put, spread out the mums on. It does look a lot like asphalt from the aerial. In fact, you know, I greeted my applicant at the door saying, "What did you do out there?" To me. But that is not the case. It's just fabric. In fact, it's already all gone, because the mums are grown. They grow them back behind the, behind the greenhouses. So what looked like asphalt on the area is, it's not. It's just, it's just bare dirt, but it had weed, you know, had that weed control fabric down while they were growing the mums on it. So, if you have any specific questions about, you know, about any of the site plan items that might be related to the prior site plan that AEW did and notes that are on it, I'll need to get with the Planning Department to resolve those and get, make sure that those are on. It's not the applicant's intent to modify any of that old site plan, except to add the greenhouse. That's the only thing he's coming in for right now. So I just wanted to make that very clear.
Okay, I'm glad you also clarified that, because I was going to call you out for the asphalt that you put down, but I'm glad you clarified.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Snyder? Anybody have questions? All right, Nick, I think you're up on this one. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Acting Chairman Turner.
Yep.
So as Mr. Kirk said, this property did achieve a Class A non-conforming use status back in 2009. Historically operated as a nursery greenhouse for a very long time before that. Since 2009, they've been back in 2012 and 2020 to get approval for additional greenhouses, an expansion of that Class A non-conforming use. The site does meet all the requirements for Section 4.32, which governs nurseries and greenhouses. Shows where they're usually located, within our commercial and industrial districts. This one is located in a residential district as a Class A non-conforming use. The proposal is pretty straightforward for the additional greenhouse there. Thank you for clarifying that it's not asphalt. It did raise some eyebrows in the Planning Department. Wanted to make sure that any improvements there are done with approval from the Planning Commission, and planning staff's aware of it, of course. With that, the only other things that I want to call to attention are the lack of a trash enclosure. So if you either can provide a trash enclosure or a method of trash removal on the site, that'd be something we want to see. And then all the areas that are out, are identified for outdoor storage, you see using historical aerials that we see they are used for outdoor storage. We just want to get an idea as to what's being stored there, and then the full extent of where items are being stored in the site. Because you will be limited to the site plan approval for whatever's on that site plan. Beyond those, same as the last site plan review, the previous application before this, the fire department does have some concerns with providing a fire access road to the rear of the property. As long as you can meet those requirements, I would say the expansion's pretty well in line with the original approval back in 2009. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thanks, Nick. All right, again, at this time, anybody in the audience who wants to come down and speak for or against this non-conforming use can do so. Just give us your name and address for the record. Once, twice. All right. Pete, back to you again. You want to make any concluding remarks?
No, thank you again.
All right. So the Planning Commission's motion, again, must be based on the following standards: The continuance thereof would not be contrary to the public health, safety, and welfare, or the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The use does not and is not likely to significantly depress the value of nearby property. The use was lawful at the time of its inception. No useful purpose would be served by strict application of the provisions or requirements of this ordinance with which the use does not conform. We, again, can approve, disapprove, or postpone this this evening if we choose. Motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore?
I move to approve the expansion of the Class A non-conforming use for site plan number 25-30 for George Papadalis, for Telly's Greenhouse and Garden Center, 4343 24 Mile Road, parcel number 23-07-08-354-019, located on the north side of 24 Mile Road, west of Shelby Road. The greenhouse expansion is approved, subject to the applicant submitting revised plans addressing all Planning Commission, Department, and Engineering comments. The approval is based on the following: Number one, the operation shall conform to all township, county, state, and federal regulations pertaining to this activity. Number two, the expansion has been arranged to minimize impact on the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Number three, the use of the site is limited to the description of the site plan. Number four, the use will not likely result in nuisances for surrounding development. And number five, expansion of the use would be contrary to public health, safety, welfare, or the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Baker. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner DeChau?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Luray?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, thanks. All right, next item is our rezoning petition. One second. Number 25-29, Otavio Palazzolo, Affinity Land Holdings LLC, 49421 Hayes Road. Vacant parcel, the numbers, parcel number 23-07-24-400-031, and vacant parcel number 23-07-24-400-035, located north of 22 Mile Road on the west side of Hayes Road. A proposed rezoning, O1, to C2 linear retail business. This, again, is a public hearing. I'll ask Secretary Moore to read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, McComb County, Michigan, has received a request for the following rezoning. Applicant, Otavio Palazzolo, Affinity Land Holdings LLC, 21740 21 Mile Road, McComb, Michigan, 48044. Proposed zoning, rezoning from office O1, professional office, to C2 linear retail business. Location, 49421 Hayes Road, parcel number 23-07-24-400-031. Vacant parcel, parcel number 23-07-24-400-035, located north of 22 Mile Road on the west side of Hayes Road, straight rezoning, 25-29. Sidwell numbers are 23-07-24-400-031, and 23-07-24-400-035. Legal description is as follows, as printed on the public hearing announcement. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, October 27th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Township Municipal Building Boardroom, 52700 Van Dyke Avenue, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48316-5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for the rezoning may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair. Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the McComb Daily on October 8th, 2025. There were nine utilities, 40 property owners, and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on October 7th, 2025.
Thank you, Raquel. Mr. Kirk, does this publication meet all requirements as stipulated in local ordinance and state statute?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the attorney? Anybody? Okay. Do we get any correspondence on this one, Raquel?
No, we did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very good, thank you. Format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or his representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public for their comments, and then the petitioner may come forward, make any concluding remarks. I see the petitioner is here, ready, here to go, so go ahead, give us your name and address, please, for the record, and make sure you sign in after we're done.
Okay.
After, go ahead.
My name is Otavio Palazzolo. My address is 21720 21 Mile Road, McComb, Michigan, 48044. So we're just looking to build a retail structure, parallel with Hayes Road, on, on the two, two parcels there. Just be a general convenience, you know, barber shops, what have you, in this building.
What did you say, convenience what?
Convenience, you know, general convenience, barber shops, beauty salons. It'd be a single structure, parallel with Hayes Road.
Okay. That's it for now?
Yeah, unless you have questions.
Oh, I'm sure there will be. Yeah, I know I'm going to have some, so.
Yep.
So let me ask you a question. You're coming in asking for, from O1 to C2. Is there a reason why it cannot be developed as zoned O1?
I, our, our intention was to bring, you know, retail use along Hayes Road, similar to other, other buildings in the area.
So it, it, it's not that it can't be, you're just, you're opting to go with C2?
Correct, yep.
All right, second question. Since you're opting to go with commercial, right now it's O1, why not go with C1?
I, it was, I understand that on major, on major roads along Hayes, C2 was, was the appropriate zoning.
Okay, so you said that at this point, you're looking at a retail strip mall, right, at this point?
Yes, yep.
You mentioned a barber shop. Anything else that you can think of going in there?
Just along those types of lines that we would have in there. Just general retail convenience store.
Let me ask a question, too. Possible drive-in, drive-through?
Our, our intention is not to have any drive-through, no.
I'm just going to ask you this question. I have no idea what it is, but let's say down the line, do you have any intent of maybe, if you got C2 coming back and saying, "You know what? We've thought about it, and retail, strip mall may not work. We'd like to go with a special land use to maybe get a car wash." Is that something you may think of down there?
I think we have enough car washes.
I agree with you. That's why, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, so thank you.
That is not in the game, yep.
Yeah, trick question. No, no, it was a true question, because we, I just hear them all the time, but, okay, that's all I had. Anybody else have any questions for the petitioner?
We're going to make sure we add that in the record.
I make, yeah, I wrote it down, absolutely. So no one has any questions. All right. So I'm going to open it for a public hearing. John, you got a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, yep.
Mr. Palazzolo, do you know, have you researched how many stores can fit in a strip mall?
I, yeah, I believe we're looking at around eight, eight units.
Eight units, because 2.26 is pretty big for, which is good for eight units.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so that's right around what we're, we're measuring out right now.
Put your mic on, and move it down. I don't think they heard you. That's okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I was asking Mr. Palazzolo how many stores he thinks that can fit in that shopping center, and he said, you know, around eight. But I'm sure you still have to do more research to see how many square foot each store will be and what to attract in that area.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, thanks, John. Again, this is going to open it to the public. However, I'd like to say this is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks, if any, will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when they make the final decision on this rezoning. At this point, anyone, at this point in time, anyone in the audience wishing to come forth and speak for or against? This rezoning is free to do so. Come on down, anybody? Come on down, sir. You can speak first, and then when you're done, make sure you give us your name and address on that sign-in sheet over there, okay?
Okay, thanks for the opportunity. I was not one of the residents who received the postcard.
Name and address, please.
Name is Charles M. Kubert, K-U-B-E-R-T, Jr.
Okay.
Address is 14955 Village Park Circle, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315 Village, what's the name of our condo? Windmill Pond.
Got it, okay, go ahead.
We, I'm concerned about the reason we may need another strip mall. For a long time, you see strip malls that have vacancies. I think there's still a lot of opportunity for businesses to come and use up some of the space that's already built. When we build something, or you buy a house, you usually look at what it's zoned behind you, what you're up against. And when you see office, there's a lot less traffic. We have some offices by our condos. Pediatrician, there's many different offices back there. You hear nothing. There's one dumpster for almost the whole building. When you get into a strip center, normally you, you run multiple dumpsters. They pick them up at all different times. We have it going on, on the north side of our complex. Trucks coming in at all different times. If you have a business with refrigerated items, they have to come in a reefer truck. Many times, it's not just the truck that makes the noise. You can shut the truck off, but the reefer still has to go. I've been in businesses before where there were restrictions and curfews, and when those trucks could come. I am very concerned about the safety of that intersection. I recently moved from 26 Mile Road in Romeo Plank in McComb Township. Things were a little bit more open there. That particular intersection, I don't know if anybody's ever done a study, but all day long, almost daily, you hear sirens, and there's accidents. And in my unprofessional opinion, there are too many driveways. I'll try and pull out with the restaurant. I'll try and pull out with the restaurant, the, I'm sorry, the 7-Eleven, the gas station on that corner. There also concerns me, there's a daycare center there as well. There's a shopping center, strip center across the street. There's a credit union on the corner. Cars are trying to weave in and out and cut in and out. As a matter of fact, on the way here, I looked and the traffic was backed up on Hayes Road all the way past where those driveways would be. It's definitely a concern that I would like to be considered. I agree with whoever asked why the change. To me, there's a lot of office space there already. I think the only retail that's real close to there, as far as the strip center, is the, I believe it's called the Echo Market, which was a little bit of a mess, and it's sideways, and it's, in my opinion, still not being used where it's supposed to be there for. Lot of problems with the landscaping, light pollution, and those type of things. I'm curious on what, and I should have done my homework on this. The older home that's there on a pretty big chunk of property, is that currently zoned residential? Or is it a residential home that's just still residential?
We'll get, we'll get the answer to that question for you.
Okay. I think it gets a little bit hard for emergency vehicles to get around. If you introduce more retail, the retail hours are 7:00 AM till 9:00 PM, usually weekends, evenings, holidays. Office buildings, medical buildings, the ones that are over there are closed Saturdays, closed Sundays, closed holidays, and there's a lot less traffic. Of course, we're worried about the noise of the garbage trucks and the dumpsters getting emptied. If they have one company, that would be great, but that's not generally the experience. I think that's about it. Naturally, we always worry about aesthetics, what it looks like, what the setback will be, how far away it will be from our condos. I personally, that won't affect my condo. I'm here more as a concerned citizen. That's it.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead and sign in.
You bet.
Anyone else wish to come down and speak for or against?
Hello.
Hello.
First time up here, so I'm a little nervous. My name and...
Name and address, yeah.
Nancy Azofifa, and the address is 15020 Village Park Circle.
What was your last name?
Azofifa.
Okay. I'm glad somebody knows how to spell that, but, okay, go ahead.
I can spell it if you'd like.
Yeah, please do that.
A as in apple, Z as in zebra, O, F as in frank, E-I, F as in frank, A as in apple.
Okay. Go ahead, Nancy.
Well, gosh, I've been in Shelby Township a very, very long time.
Move your mic down a little bit.
And our family business is here as well, but this does affect, unfortunately, it does affect my backyard. It will be, I believe on the postcard, it shows that it'll be coming up, up to 300 feet from my, I didn't grab the...
Are you in the Village Park?
I am on Village Park.
All right.
So the plaza would actually be on, I back up to 20, 22 Mile, Hayes is on my east side, so the plaza would be to my east.
Right.
So again, my concern is why the change in rezoning, going from a medical, or I believe that was classified as a medical building office, to a strip mall. I don't agree that we need another strip mall, like you had mentioned, a car wash.
Well, he put that to rest, so that's for the record.
Yeah. Well, I mean, my concern too is what kind of tenants will be in the strip mall. He's saying that there would be up to about eight units available, so eight different businesses would be able to lease in that plaza. Again, the traffic is a, is a huge concern. Not a day goes by where you don't hear emergency vehicles traveling up and down Hayes and 22. Again, the daycare, also a big concern. Vacant property just to the north of 22 Mile where the Adco Fruit Market or Market is, vacant property there as well. Long, long-term in the future, there is, on the east side of 22 and Hayes, a very large parcel of property. I don't know if there is any planning for the east side of Hayes Road.
That's Macomb Township, so yeah, we wouldn't know that.
No? Okay. So that would be my big thing, because whatever, I mean, that's a much larger parcel of property, so I'm assuming that whatever goes there will also contribute to the traffic and the noise. Again, his building would be encroaching somewhat upon my nice yard, so noise, noise pollution, any parking lot lighting also would be an issue for me. The noise of delivery trucks at all times of days, all, all hours of the days, I'm sorry. I, I guess, just my concern is just overall, what is it really going to benefit to have another strip mall there opposed to a office building? I think office buildings would be much quieter, less intrusive to the neighbors in the area, especially in our community. I, I think that just we don't necessarily need another strip mall when there's so much other open property and vacant buildings that could be used. If you decide to grant permission to have the property rezoned, my request would be to put a large berm with trees to help alleviate any noise, any additional lighting, the traffic in that area, just the noise itself.
We haven't got that far yet. Plus, we don't grant approval. We just recommend one way or the other. The board, Township Board does the granting.
Okay.
And then as far as the berm, that would all come through the proper planning through the site plan if and when we got to that part. So right now, we're just debating the merits of, is it wise to go from O1 to C2?
Yeah.
Anyway, I've heard everything you said. I've wrote it all down, so you made some good points.
I know the house is still there, and, and like my neighbor Chuck said, you know, is it still classified as residential, or was it changed over? And when did that change take place? So.
Okay.
Just curious.
All right. Anything else?
Um, no. That's it. Thank you.
All right. You're good. Make sure you sign in. Anyone else wish to come down? Once, twice? Hearing none? Okay. Back up here to the board. Over to Julie for your comments.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. So this property is a total of 2.26 acres. As you know, it is north of 22 Mile on the west side of Hayes, north of 22 Mile. That current corner contains the 7-Eleven gas station, including a daycare facility and an office building to the west. And furthermore, to the west is Cornerstone Medical Facility, and then there's two single-family residential parcels. And to the north of the daycare facility are two parcels that are, are up for this rezoning, and then north of that is actually light manufacturing. With that being said, this is 2.26 acres. The master plan has this designated as mixed residential, but unfortunately, that will, really is not feasible, only because there's not much of a mixed residential type of unit that would be able to be constructed on, on 2.26 acres. So with that being said, with the proposal, obviously, it is up to the board to deem that C2 would qualify in this. And I also wanted to mention that with the C2 zoning, they could always build an office building on that property. Under that C2 zoning, offices are permitted use. So they are just looking for more options, and like Mr. Palazzolo had mentioned, they're looking at retail, retail building. With that being said, also there, the Cornerstone Medical Facility is, backs up to this parcel, and that is also zoned O1. The house is zoned O1, so it's legal, legal nonconforming, being that the township did not rezonate. At some point, it was designated as office, but years ago, I'm sure it was built in the 1960s, that home, and perhaps at that time, it could have been some sort of residential.
So right now, even though it's a house there, it has been O1 for some time?
Yes.
Okay. Understand.
So it's legal, legal nonconforming.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
Nope. That's all I have, Chairman.
Okay. Come on back up to address some of the comments and the questions. We found out about the house. That was one of the questions now. Brought up about the dumpsters. What is your plan? I know we haven't got to the site plan yet, but what is your overall plan for dumpsters on the property?
Well, there'll be enclosed dumpsters, you know, that are, you know, managed on a weekly basis to be cleaned and kept.
More, more than one, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. The driveways, of course, will be, will be regulated by the Macomb County Department of Roads, so that's not an issue. What about the, what about hours? Do you have any, any idea how many, is it going to be 24-hour operation there for all the buildings, or what? All the tenants, or what? Do we know?
We haven't, we haven't planned that far in that. I, I would, I would presume it's rather unusual right now to have a 24-hour business, so I don't, I don't expect that type of business in there, no.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions? You have any final things to say, or?
I just wanted to mention, you know, with the, the neighboring community, the property that we own, there's a larger parcel behind this property that directly is affected with this community. Our parcel doesn't necessarily, you know, touch the neighborhood, so I just want to make sure there was a differentiation, if there was any idea that this was all one large parcel being developed. It's not, there's a, there's a larger rear parcel that is not part of what we're trying to do.
Okay. Understood. And that's it?
Yep.
All right. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Planning Commission's decision on this rezoning must be based on the following. The practicality of this rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land. Do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning? Is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? Planning Commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table this request to evaluate the information we received this evening. A motion is in order. Commissioner Oppone.
Move to approve, to recommend approval to the Township Board for rezoning petition 25-29 Otavio Palazzolo, Affinity Land Holdings LLC, 49421 Hayes Road, parcel number 23-07-24-400-031, located north of 22 Mile Road on the west side of Hayes. Hayes Road, proposed rezoning, O1 Professional Office to C2 Linear Retail Business, based on the following. The C2 Linear Retail Business zoning classification is appropriate zoning designation for a systematic development pattern. The change is not out of scale with existing development patterns in this area of the township, which the chance in zoning would provide a more uniform and consistent development pattern. The change in zoning would not adversely impact any abutting developments.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Oppone, supported by Commissioner LaRae. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner LaRae.
Yes.
Commissioner DeShaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries. You're all set. Oops. Hang on a second. Next item under old business is Site Plan Number 18-19 Frank DiPonio, DNR Land Development LLC. It's a vacant parcel located north of 23 Mile Road, east of Mount Road. Industrial building, site plan extension. Julie or Nick?
Thank you. Mr. DiPonio is here. The applicant is here. I don't know if he...
Come on down.
Comment?
Any comments that you'd like to make, Mr. DiPonio, about the extension of the site plan?
No request to the extension, Mr. Turner, in regards to that site plan. We are, we're working at it, and we, we keep taking swings, and over the last couple of years, we've had a couple, and due to the up and downs with the economy, we've got, and we, they're still in the, they're still in the works. We just don't have anything sealed up for us, so we're going to need an extension, and that's what we discussed with Julie.
And you think two years would be right to get it done, right?
I'm surely hoping so.
Everything goes well. Yeah, I...
I want to go faster than the board does, believe me.
All right. Very good. Thanks. Anything you want to add, Julie?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I, I just wanted to note that I don't have any objections to the extension. Our zoning ordinance has not changed any particular items relating to the light manufacturing district, so the site would not be affected by anything. It's still status quo.
All right. Thank you. Motion will be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner LaRae.
I'd like to make a motion to extend Site Plan 18-19 Frank DiPonio, DNR Land Development LLC, located on Simone Drive, north of 23 Mile between Van Dyke and Mount. Parcel Number 230716376-018 for a period of two years, starting on October 27, 2025, to expire on October 23, 2027.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner LaRae, supported by Commissioner Oppone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner LaRae.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner DeShaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Long.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Yep.
All right.[1768.21]